Good evening, Committee of the Whole. It will come to order. Record will show that all members of the committee are present, as well as Mayor George, Directors Corrigan and Lininger, Chief of Staff Story, and our Assistant, Chief Assistant Law Director Jen Swallow, and many members of the public. We'll begin this evening with our sole agenda item, which is the term sheet that will be introduced this evening in City Council in the full meeting at 7:30. I wanted Committee of the Whole to come together in advance of that so that we could be prepared and get started as soon as possible on consideration of this resolution. The resolution is, it is to authorize the mayor to enter into negotiations for the term sheet. It is not an authorization to execute development agreement. Excuse me, to nego-- it's to authorize negotiations for the development agreement. And once that development agreement is negotiated and finalized, the administration will come back with the final product to authorize execution of that. And so, tonight we'll be considering the term sheet, which was discussed between the administration as well as the principals of Casto. We also had an advisory panel that was assembled. I believe it last met in mid-December. I was on that panel. I see many, many other members of that panel present here this evening. And we'll go from there. So, I think it would make sense, if there's no objection from my colleagues, that we would allow Director Lininger and Mayor George to make a presentation this evening. I see one is queued up. We'll pause after that for questions from Council. We'll certainly make sure that everyone on Council has an opportunity to speak up. I know that a part of the process, this was made public as a part of the communication this evening, is going to be, you know, here's the term sheet as we enter into negotiations for this, to hear from the community, of course, and have a number of meetings that'll be scheduled related to public input. So, in terms of the proposed plan and the term sheet, is everybody okay with that process this evening? Okay, I'll turn it over to Mayor George.
Yes, thank you, Councilman, and good evening, members of the public. So glad so many of you are here tonight as we discuss the plans for the former hospital site. You know, one of the main objectives for my administration was to identify the best use for this 5.7-acre property in the middle of our downtown. And I think we have a very good proposal ahead of you with a significant win for our community. This development, it captures many of the key elements that were set out during the initial visioning process following the loss of the hospital. We've a very high-caliber developer in Casto. They're based in Ohio, and they've really been a true partner with us as we've heavily negotiated this deal back and forth. And we're very pleased to present the proposed concept and the term sheet. A couple key components of this development. It's going to energize our downtown with hundreds of new residents and employees. It will have a new community gathering space. It's also going to retain a major employer that without this site would certainly be looking at Westlake or other places. So, we keep this homegrown employer here in Lakewood. That's definitely a win for our community. We're going to have additional downtown parking in the garage. Also, this captures the affordability component, which we talk so much about these days, making sure that Lakewood remains a place for everybody. So, they will be tapping into our CRA, where 20% of the rental units will be affordable based on HUD guidelines. There'll also be an additional 30,000 square feet of first-floor retail to support the commercial corridor. So, those are a couple key highlights. Shaun's going to begin to go into the presentation in more detail. And I'm really excited to be talking to Council, to talking to the community. As Councilman O'Malley mentioned, this is the beginning. This isn't the final. We want to hear from Council. We want to hear from members of the community to make sure that this development is the right fit for Lakewood. I think we have a lot of the major components here today, and I'm very excited to talk about it today. So, with that, Shaun, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor George. Council President O'Malley, members of Council, good evening. So, I have a large amount of information I'm going to share with you this evening. A lot of that was included in your packet. For those here in the audience, you can also get that same information at the city website. There's two ways to get to it. First of all, there's a direct way, just going to LakewoodOH.gov/downtowndevelopment. Or off of the city's front page, you can just click on the Downtown Development link. It'll take you to the same page. All the information I'm sharing this evening is on that page, as well as this presentation. If it's not on there yet, it'll be on there first thing tomorrow morning. So, I do have a little bit of an agenda, but the things we're going to walk through this evening, I'm going to start with where we've been and where we are now, really dive into the details with the proposed development and concept plan, talk a little bit about the market analysis, and then walk you through the term sheet. Council President O'Malley mentioned the Downtown Development Advisory Panel. They've been instrumental in, they were instrumental in the previous effort. They were instrumental in this effort to get us to this point. Still some work to do, of course. And then talk about what that work is, looking forward as far as the process and potential schedule. So, I do want to pause. I know Council President O'Malley touched on this. I do want to pause and just make sure everybody's clear about where we are this evening. The resolution that's in front of City Council does not authorize the execution of a development agreement. It authorizes the negotiation. We will be back in front of City Council, and we'll touch base along the way as, once we've negotiated that development agreement, as well as once we've negotiated a development plan that'll be run through your boards and commissions, specifically your planning commission, your ABR, and will also likely involve the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board as part of that conversation. Ultimately, both those pieces, the development plan, the final development plan, and the development agreement will be back in front of City Council at some point here in the future once we've covered that process. So, there's a lot of process to go through. I have a slide that talks about what that process looks like, what that schedule looks like. But just know that this is, this, we are, we've been talking about this a while, but we are still very much at the beginning. There's a lot of details that we don't know, and we will figure those out, figure those out as we go along. Sorry, it's really sensitive on here. So, I do want to start with, back to our agenda and really kind of start where, with what we've been saying for the last 18 months or so, or 12 months or so. I feel like a little bit of a broken record talking about how when we moved to Casto, what have we been doing with Casto and North Point Realty? And this is an image from October of 2016. This is when we, before we put out the original request for proposal, the request for qualifications from all the developers. The site was very different then. We had the Cleveland Clinic Hospital, Lakewood Hospital on the site. We had an office building and a parking garage across the street. Flash forward hour and a half years or so to, this is a condition that existed in March of this year, or March of last year. This is what the site looked like when we, when, just after we re-engaged with Casto. There's been quite a few changes, obviously. The hospital has since been demolished. The Curtis Block still remains, and the surface parking lot at the south end still remains. The 565-space parking garage that's on the other side of Bell has been demolished, and the Cleveland Clinic Family Health Center now exists. During this work, we also encountered some environmental issues on the site from a former dryclean operations that was there. We've since remediated the site through the Ohio EPA's Voluntary Action Program. We've received a No Further Action Letter. We've also received a covenant not to sue from the EPA. What that means is that there is an operations and maintenance plan in place that requires the annual monitoring of the site. There also has to be some, there has to be some, or just some protections that have to be put on the site as for, during construction and after construction. But ultimately, we resolved, in the eyes of the EPA, those environmental issues that exist. So, but those alone were some significant changes that Casto had been kind of sitting on the sideline for four and a half years, had to pick up and regather themselves and take a look at the site, and it took some time to do that. For good measure in the middle of that, and maybe just for, somebody's got a good sense of humor, we really had to keep us, we had a pandemic that really kept us on our toes when this transition was occurring. We faced challenges that we hadn't seen in our lifetime, probably won't, hopefully not see again. We had to adjust to those, and none of them were under our control. So, the global pandemic created uncertainty in the office market. It created uncertainty in the hospitality market. It sent our construction industry in a tailspin with construction pricing, supply chain issues, labor shortages. With the recovery that we're now in, there is record inflation. We now have a rising interest rate. What I'm, the point with all of that is there's a lot of issues that we had to address over the last 18 months, or 16 months, to get to this point. We think we have a good framework to move forward, and that's what we want to talk about this evening. And one thing that we've held very clear and near and dear to us as we've gone through this process is the 13 development objectives that the city put together when we initially set out on this process four and a half years ago. Ultimately, where we're at now is we have a development program that's physically feasible, it's financially feasible. There's still a lot of things we don't know. There's still a lot of work we have to do to tug and pull on that and understand, when we talk about parking garages, when we talk about the Curtis Block, what does that mean? But we have a framework, and we've tried to, we've kept these 13 objectives close to us as we work through that framework. So, that brings us to where we are today. So, with guidance from our advisory panel, working back and forth with Casto and the North Point Realty team, we've navigated these challenges. We've developed a conceptual site plan. And we've also put forth a term sheet that outlines the major items for consideration as we move forward. The term sheet is not binding. It is a good faith framework. There are, I'm sounding a broken record again, but there are many details we simply don't know until we advance further into this development review process. As you've, as you've heard, as the mayor shared, we have, our Roundstone Insurance has committed to be part of this project and anchor a four-story mixed-use building at the corner of Detroit and Bell Avenue. This company has experienced explosive growth over the last handful of years. When they moved to the city in 2016, they had 40 employees. They now have over 100, and they expect to double that again in the next five years. Right now, what's important to them is they presently do not fit in their building as they sit today with the number of employees. They bring their employees in in shifts, and so, they need new space. Regardless of what happens on this site, they need new space, and we have limited opportunities to capture them in our community. We were fortunate that our conversations led us to this site, and they've taken an incredible interest in it to the point where they are going to own and their portion of the office, of that four-story mixed-use building. We do have a separate incentive that we've negotiated with Roundstone. That incentive does require City Council's approval. It's very similar to incentives that we've offered to other developers. For example, the Bay Ridge Building, St. James, through our Economic Development Program and our Economic Development Account. There will be an agreement for that incentive that will be put in front of City Council. That'll likely happen at the same time that the development agreement is placed in front of you. So, I want to spend some time now focusing on the development program itself. You can see the conceptual site plan off on the left side of the screen. We'll work our way around the site, talking about the different components. The first component's up is the office. The office component, which is, I've already mentioned, is a mixed-use four-story building, has 80,000 square feet of space. The floors two through four is where Roundstone will call home. They will actually occupy floors three and four initially. They will lease out floor two and use that as a future growth floor as their needs come to fruition. As I mentioned, it is going to be owned and occupied by Roundstone Insurance, and then the first floor will be retained by Casto and North Point Realty, where they'll have 12,000 square foot of retail space. There are also, and it's not reflected in the square footage numbers, but there will also be a first-floor lobby area for the office use. So, these are some images. These are some conceptual renderings of the office use, office building. This is, these are really the only architectural images that, in the community plaza, that's adjacent to it that have really been developed at this point as part of the overall sales package that Casto and North Point Realty worked together on with Roundstone. There's, we, there's still a lot of work to do on what that, the architectural vocabulary is going to be for the rest of the site that we'll get into as we get, we get deeper into the development review process. But this starts to set that framework and starts to set that vision for Casto and North Point Realty and Roundstone as far as the site itself. There were some renderings, these were not included in your packet, but these are just some ideas of what the inside lobby space and then the office space above it could potentially look like, just showing that it, they are trying, they are creating a Class A office space in the heart of our downtown. And again, these will be in the presentation. It'll be online. So, the next item then is the retail and commercial piece along the Detroit Avenue corridor. It will likely wrap around the ends of Bell and Marlowe. So, again, 12,000 square feet in the first floor of the office building. Then another 17,400 square feet abouts of commercial space, that'll be on the first floor of an expanded Curtis Block building. I don't know if you'll be able to see the, yeah, you can kind of see my cursor. So, you can see a little bit of an outline of the Curtis Block. They are then proposing, we'll talk a little bit more about the Curtis Block here in a minute. They are then proposing to go vertical above the Curtis Block and extending it farther back. The upper floors will be residential. Again, we'll talk about that as well. But the commercial space will extend a little bit to the south along the community space and help activate that, that component of the project. The next item then is the residential, which is where a majority of the site is dedicated to, is to residential. There are currently 204 units proposed on this, on the development with ranging in heights from two to five stories. Two stories, again, I know it's hard to see my cursor, but two stories at the southern end of the site, working its way up to three stories, then to four stories, and then to five stories, and then to five stories as you come closer to Detroit. Trying to transition from a more dense location along Detroit Avenue on the commercial corridor, moving south then into the more, to the single-family neighborhood that exists along the southern ends of Marlowe and Bell Avenue. Casto and North Point Realty have made the city aware that they will be participating in our Affordable Housing Program through the Community Reinvestment Program, Community Reinvestment Area Program, whereby 20% of the 204 units, so 41 as it's shown today, will be made available to households meeting maximum income thresholds. That breaks out two ways. If you remember from our conversations about SOLOV, 10% of the 41 units will be 80% AMI. Another 10% will then be 120% AMI, and AMI is area median income. Right now, 80% area median income is around $44,000. And unfortunately, I don't have the number for 120%, but that should be around the low 60s. The next item of the development program is the community space. There was a lot of time spent on this, both internally with our advisory panel and working back and forth to understand where this should be located, how it should, how it should exist. This is a little bit different than the past site plans that you've seen for this site. Casto and North Point Realty has always shown this space as being central to the block rather than on the corner. And there are reasons for, there are pros and cons for both. Ultimately, though, what we're trying to achieve is a programmed and a programmable space. It's year-round, it's multifunctional, and it can serve for a variety of purposes, whether private events, community gatherings, and just general, just hangout spaces to help support the first-floor commercial and retail space that's going to exist, as well as then the 200 jobs that'll be sitting on the upper floors over, looking over the plaza. It is mid-block. It provides a central front door to the project. It also allows us then use the buildings to help hold the corners and create that, that street wall, help create that block face in the density of the block. It also helps us, because it is interior, we now have three sides that are facing buildings that'll be programmed with hospitality uses, restaurants, retail space. They can help activate that space versus sitting on a corner across from an ER and a patient drop-off, and also abutting up to two very busy streets in our community. And so, again, there's, there's a lot of discussion back and forth about where to, where's the best place for this to live. But with this site plan and this, the overall program, we felt that this was the best, best place to locate it. There's certainly some challenges with the space that we talked about with the advisory panel. If you, on the next slide, you'll actually be able to see it a little bit better. Because it is in between multi-story buildings, the noise could be an issue, as well as snow, and maintaining that during the wintertime, being able to grow trees and other things, and potentially some high shade areas. So, there are some things that we'll have to think through as this gets a little bit deeper into the process to see how we can best activate it. But this is looking into the community, community space, starting to see how it could just be used more informally. And then Casto and North Point, working with Dimmitt and their landscape architect, Edge, Edge Landscape, Edge Group out of Columbus. They took a look at a couple of different scenarios, kind of spinning around, first of all, the space, so you can see how, yes, there is a large amount of hard surface, but then there's, there's opportunities to interject landscapes, there's opportunities to interject soft, soft surfaces, and then even potentially some water features here at the back to help, help with the sound echo, the potential echo that might happen in a space like this. They also thought about how can we activate the space other than just for dining? So, they looked at it from a market standpoint, whether it's a farmer's market or art festival, and also even from a concert venue. Again, just trying to speak to that being a multifunctional, programmable space. We also spent quite a bit of time talking about the Curtis Block, as has Council and as has the community over time. We've shared with, with Council, in 2020, the city conducted an assessment of the, of the building as we came into our positions and walked through it and saw that there was significant water damage and structural deterioration that was happening in the building. Ultimately, that report, there was, there was some cost associated with it. There was also a structural engineer that declared the building unsafe. And there was a significant amount of funds that would be needed to bring that building up just to be watertight and structurally safe. It is locally designated a historic facade. It is, the historic facade is proposed to be saved in this initial proposal by Casto. The, the thought process, we'll be able to see this on the next slide, thought process is to save that facade, perhaps other components of the building too. We haven't worked through the means and methods about how that would, how that would take place, but then step back off of that existing building edge and go vertical with residential above it. In the meantime, creating a more modern, flexible commercial space that can house a variety of tenants in the existing Curtis Block, and then a new addition coming off the back. So, I shared this slide when we're talking about the office, and you can see in the background, and this is intentional in the back because we haven't fully thought through, what does it mean when we talk about a facade save? And so, Casto and North Point Realty, along with Dimmitt as the architect, went through and just started to think about a concept. What could this look like? And that's why it's kind of showed blurred out in the background. It is, it can be a challenge, and we talked about this with the advisory panel. It can be a challenge to blend a historic facade with a new construction, even though it's sitting back and off and behind it and above it. But how do you marry those two things together is a challenge for the design team to consider as we get deeper into it. We also had a lot of conversation with the advisory panel about what is the right solution for the Curtis Block? Is a full preservation the, an appropriate solution, recognizing that it's going to have a significant cost associated with it that will likely have to be subsidized through, through economic incentives? Or should we go the other direction and look more fully so we have a full spectrum of options available to us? What would it look like if the Curtis Block wasn't there and we replaced the building entirely with something different? Take the investment that was going to go, the $2 million investment that's conceptually perceived or intended to go towards the facade save and redirected elsewhere into the, into the project, as the other objectives in the project that we've all set out. And the last item in the development program is of course the parking garage. With this type of density, we, there is a need to provide parking on the site for the use. What's proposed right now is a 540 parking, a 540-space parking garage that's going to be shared amongst all uses, office, retail, commercial, residential, and the general public. We also have to keep in mind that we are encumbered with 75 spaces from the Cleveland Clinic as part of previous agreements that were entered in two years ago. So, those 75 spaces that currently exist on the surface lot at the south end of the site, they have to be reincorporated into, into the parking structure. There will then be an additional 56 on-street spaces as part of the project. We did spend some time talking about the location of the garage. We actually spent quite a bit of time at the advisory panel talking about the location of the garage. Where should it be? Could we take advantage of the excavation that's already happened on the site? Can we bury it into the below gray, below gray and have a basement garage, if you will? We looked at if the garage has to pop up, which we ultimately decided that because of the environmental issues that are on the site, as well as then just the cost to, to, to put the garage below gray and then build over the top of it. There were some things that necessitated the garage to come above ground. How does it exist on the site? Should it face the Marlowe side versus the Bell side? Ultimately, we decided that for the purposes of where we are right now, this, it was more appropriate to have the garage on the, on the Bell side, in part because we do have the Cleveland Clinic, we have the emergency drop-off, we have a patient drop-off. We also are across the street from a parking lot. Yes, the city does own an office building that's around the corner of this garage, but that, that, that portion of the office building is not very engaging to the street either. So, if we were to have it anywhere, this would, this would make the most sense. However, there was also concern with what, how does that, how does that garage interact with the street? What does it look like? What does it feel like? And so, we spent some time talking through other examples of garages, and there's probably some in the area, but the one we really kind of started to gravitate towards was the Grandview Yard Garage. And there's several garages associated with this project in Columbus. Ours will have a little bit more vertical scale, but you can see with how they started to now bring high-quality architectural elements onto the facade of the garage. They incorporated glass into the entrances. And then they really used landscaping and other measures to help blend that into the, into the streets, and back into the street, recognizing what already exists across the street in our situation here in Lakewood. And so, really, that's it with, as far as the, the development program itself. Having the development program now kind of set out, we wanted to now share with, with you all where, how the project fits in with the overall market demand. So, in 2017, the city did commission an economic analysis to understand what our demands are for office, retail, and commercial, and for residential. There was some discussion about hotel use in there as well. What that study found, again, this was pre-pandemic, pre-remote work, pre, my apologies, all the changes that we're seeing in the, in the, in the office market today. And at that point, they found that the, the city could generally absorb around 70, almost 74,000 square feet of office space. Now, that didn't mean new office space. That meant the city could absorb that many square feet in office, and that, that absorption could happen through vacancies that already exist in the market. Those vacancies are probably a little bit more pronounced today than even when they were in 2017. In the case of the retail, and so, Casto is proposing, and North Point Realty are proposing around 65,000, just over 65,000 square feet of, of new office space. And really, that's a testament to Roundstone being part of this project. If we had four lease space, and this is something we talked quite a bit about with PMC, Project Management Consultants Tracy Nichols, who's helped advising us on this project. If we had four lease space at the rates that we are going to have to command, it's going to be very difficult to, to attract four-lease office tenants to, to this building. And so, the fact that we now have an office user that's going to own and occupy their space really is, allows us to, to, to bring 65,000 square feet of office space to the project. So, then on the retail and commercial side, Casto's proposing almost 30,000 square feet of, of retail and commercial space. In 2017, they, we felt that we could absorb another 20,000 square feet, but that was limited to specialty food, so restaurants, and specialty food stores, but that was really kind of a minor. It was around 1,200 to 1,800 square feet. Most of it was restaurants, and that's, that's the 17,400, that's, that's shown to go into the, into the Curtis Block. That's really what a lot of that space is intended to be, is to be hospitality, restaurant-type use. And then the last on the left-hand side, I'm sorry, the right-hand side of the screen is the residential absorption. And so, this was looking specifically at downtown, and we thought that the downtown site could absorb. And at that point in time, we thought that the site could absorb somewhere between 116 and 348 units. Casto's at 240, 204, so really kind of hitting right in the middle of, of that range of what, what we felt the, the site could absorb. So, we think there's a market here for what's being proposed. We're not exceeding the market, and we don't believe we're leaving anything We're not exceeding the market, and we don't believe we're leaving anything off the table that perhaps the market could absorb. So the rest of this, what I have to share is really just the details of the term sheet. And so then, as part of your package, there was an executive summary of everything that the term sheet generally, from a high level, covers. We'll go through that relatively quickly. Again, this is where there's a lot of information on the screen. You're not going to be able to read through all of this while, for the limited amount of time that I have it up. So I encourage you to go and look at the information we have available on our website. So generally, the term sheet does start to set out, I've already mentioned, it's a general terms and conditions, it's a good faith document that we'll use to really get into the heart of our negotiations. We tried to set some goals in here. For example, we talk about sustainability and energy efficiency measures that need to be incorporated, but we talk about that very generally. It's a goal for the city to have those measures included. We don't know what that means yet, but it's a marker for us to look forward to as we get deeper into this. We do have some conditions on the term sheet related to if there's changes with Casto or North Point Realty and their ability to execute this project, we have the ability to walk away. We also set some outside markers for when we expect some things to be done, because if those things aren't done and they're moving along at the pace that we're comfortable with, then we can also walk away at that point. But keep in mind, those are outside dates. We're hoping this happens a lot sooner, especially Roundstone hopes these things happen a lot sooner as they need space very, very soon. So within the term sheet itself, it talks about a number of topics. The development program, I just walked you through the development program, it sets really what I just shared with you as essentially some minimum thresholds. Talks about architectural design that has to be high quality, has to be reflective of the standards that we've already set in place, and that'll be administered through our planning commission, through our architectural board review. I mentioned the affordable housing component. They may clearly intend to participate in that program. In exchange for participating in that program, they will receive a tax payment. There's no action required by city council on that. That is something that's available for them to utilize, provided they meet the requirements of the program. The community space, we talked about. We did not talk about that. It's our intention right now for the developer to construct program and maintain the community space. The city will have rights to that space. We do not know what that means right now. I know previously, there was conversation about the city and our partners would have access to so many days. I don't know that after hindsight being 2020 now, that that may be the right way to set that up. So we'll think about that as we move forward. I mentioned the Curtis Block and what the proposal is from Casto at this point, but we also acknowledge that there needs to be more analysis on that building and considering, whether it's considering full preservation or considering alternatives for preservation as we talked about with the advisory panel. The parking garage, similar to the community space, be owned, operated, maintained by the developer. We also talked about public improvements, there are going to be certain public improvements that'll be necessary as part of the project. We also talked about public art being included in the project. Again, we don't know what that means, but we want public art, it's something that's been important to our projects, and will be important to Casto as they move forward. Here's the sustainability issues that I mentioned in a previous example. We've also had discussions about financial incentives. We don't know exactly what those financial incentives are, but we're starting to put some framework around that. We know that there is going to be an assistance package needed, most likely in the form of a TIF. There may be other things like a new community authority or a special improvement district that may help, and that's what that is, that's an organization that can be formed and they can assess themselves taxes. If you were here for the rules committee, we talked a little bit about that from a different forum, but that was really more on an operational side and a maintenance side, not necessarily on a capital investment side. So based on what we've discussed at this point, we do expect there to be an ask, there will be a request for a TIF of some type, whether that involves the schools or not, we don't know. Whether that's 100% TIF, we don't know, but we suspect it's, we expect a TIF to be requested. We also talk about building trades and prevailing wage. This is something that we've established as a community with our recent development agreements, requiring if there's going to be an incentive that the building trades and the project labor agreement has to be executed with the Cleveland Building and Construction Trades. We also require that prevailing wage be paid as part of that. We talk about the environmental obligations, making sure the developer's aware of that, making sure that the city will be indemnified once we hand this property over. So this is now on the developer to own and operate, maintain any of those restrictions that are on the property or conditions that are on the property. We talk about the property, we talk about the development agreement and the conveyance process. What does that look like? We talk about project completion, and there's a few different dates that are thrown in there. We set an outside date for all this to be complete in four years. We talk about transfer restrictions, and the reason we talk about that is our partnership is with Casto and North Point Realty. We want to make sure that they are partners for the foreseeable future. Doesn't mean that at some point, they can't disengage from the project and sell the project, but we have some control over what that looks like and who that may or may not be. We also talk about community engagement and how important that is to our community and how we'll reach out, not just to our boards and commissions, but also reach out into the neighborhoods and have specific meetings with them. And so then that is really the term sheet at a high level. And summarized, there's obviously some additional details in your packet, and we're happy to answer any questions about them. I do want to share with you, I mentioned the Roundstone Insurance. We do have a letter of understanding with Roundstone and a copy of that letter, understanding was in your packet, has some terms and conditions, some not unlike what we have with Casto in terms of timing. What this is, is what we'd offered is a performance-based grant. What that means is, over time, provided Roundstone meets certain job retention, job creation, as well as in payroll retention and payroll creation requirements, we will reimburse permanent improvements to their building over a course of eight years at $187,500 per year. And you can see in some of the job commitments that they've set for the city that they feel comfortable they can meet. Right now, they have 108 jobs. They'll add about 17 jobs every year, and eventually be 193 jobs with about $17.5 million payroll. There's a five-year growth period for them to retain and grow those jobs, and then there's a three-year hold on all of that. That's why it's an eight-year grant, an eight-year program. So as I mentioned, and as others have mentioned this evening, we do have a downtown development advisory panel that really has an embarrassment of riches of talent on it. Some of the members are here in the audience today. Appreciate them taking yet even more time out of their schedule to be here. They did meet four times over the past 10 months. They provided us a lot of feedback on a whole host of projects, sorry, topics within the project itself. They're highlighted here on the screen. There's a detailed report that they put together that summarizes their comments. Ultimately, with those comments considered, some of which I mentioned in the course of this presentation, they did find that the proposal is able to meet the development objectives, and they did recommend that with the comments provided, they would support the advancement of the proposal into development review and the development agreement negotiation So that process, what that looks like moving forward, this is one of many, many bites at the apple. The site is zoned, planned development, so there's not a rezoning action that has to take place. However, there is a plan that has to be put in place because the old plan expired. That plan process is called a preliminary development plan. It runs through our planning commission and our architectural board review. With council's action on or before your May meeting, we hope to then start to get into that planning commission ABR process and neighborhood meetings as well, beginning perhaps as soon as May. We will also then have a development agreement that'll be due at the time that the final development plan is submitted. So along the way, we'll be negotiating that development agreement. That'll be put in front of city council, potentially in August. We'll also then start the final development process, potentially in August, and that'll allow us to then progress through that process, which is very similar to the preliminary development plan, except that city council holds the authority over both the development agreement and the development plan, the final development plan. And that'll move us into permits and construction. So I'll stop where I started, which is just a reminder about what's in front of council this evening, which is the proposed resolution to authorize negotiation of development agreement. I know it's a lot of information. It probably went maybe too fast, but certainly we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We'll take questions from council. If we don't get through all these, we can take this item up as the first item on the agenda for the full council meeting, which is supposed to start in 10 minutes. We'll also have an opportunity for public comment on any item in between the meetings. If anybody would like to speak on this, sign up on the sign that says to speak on any agenda item, and make sure you indicate it's Agenda Item 18, which is the resolution this evening. One thing that I'll be eager to see is the financials and hope that we can discuss those. I know, this may not have been what you meant, Director Lineiger, but I would just suggest, I may not be here, but, you know, as those negotiations continue, to be sure you're staying in touch with council, I'd hate for you to present a finished product that's a take-it-or-leave-it situation, and council says we'll leave it if those are our choices. So staying in touch on this, I think, is important. I know Vice President Litten and our clerk were in contact today about scheduling some additional meetings for next week and the week after to make sure that we can get moving on this as efficiently as possible.
As a good council president, our intention would be, assuming council authorizes going to negotiate development agreement, we would work to then schedule, whether it's regular check-ins through the committee, the whole, or another committee as deemed appropriate by city council, or if just at the end of the meeting, when staff is given the opportunity as well as council members to write updates, we would aim to stay in contact with council, make sure everybody's engaged and as aware of what's going on. We'd also make sure that you're aware of when all those meetings are taking place, and encourage you all to attend as your time allows.
Other members of council, questions? Councilmember Baker. We'll start at the end and work our way down.
Yeah, seniority backwards, right? So thank you to the administration, and thank you for the presentation. You did a great job of going through what we got last week. I sent an email last night, kind of just highlighting some things I think that would be helpful to me as we go through this process, and I suspect helpful to other members of council. Couple of things are just contextualizing this a little bit more within the original market study, the former hospital, kind of, and where we are now, square footages, types of use, and those things. Also, I think another companion project that would be helpful for council to really see just side-by-side would be the Top of the Hill project in Cleveland Heights, understanding, you know, amount of commercial, amount of units, amount of parking spaces, acreage, financial incentives, everything like that. We're not the same as Cleveland Heights, but we're similar, so I think that would be helpful. Big buckets of things on the office, you know, I think we should push for more. I'm hearing that that may not be possible. I think we should push for more residential. You know, if you look at where we are in that bar chart, we're on the low end of what the market could absorb. I would encourage a little bit more density, particularly along Detroit. Curtis Block, I'm really interested in what the public has to say about it. Is a facade save historic preservation or is it not? Right? I think that's going to be what we're going to go through and what we're going to hear from the public, and I'm interested to hear what the public has to say about that. I was on the planning commission that voted it historic, but we still need to think about what that works and how else, you know, it might be able to play into the site. Community space, the incentives, the parking garage, all these things I'd like to get into. The parking garage, wow, it's big. I think we knew that. I think you need parking for a commercial space. I would like us to think about being able to go vertical off the parking garage, if that takes us maybe going a little deeper with our foundations to be able to support something. I'm thinking of downtown on Euclid, where they put an apartment building Stark did above a parking garage. Let's be really thoughtful about EV, about autonomous cars, about parking, about being able to transition that space if parking needs go down because of some of those things. But really excited to get in this process, and, you know, hopefully, some of the things I've identified in my email, we can go through in the next couple of meetings we have identified. More of a comment than questions, but thank you.
Director, any comments on that now, or do we want to, let us just rattle off a bunch of questions, and he'll get back to us?
In the interest, I did, I have had a chance to dive in a little bit to Councilman Baker's questions, and I have some analysis of, and comparisons of the Top of the Hill project. There's also another project in Cleveland Heights with the Cedar Lee Meadow Brook project, as well as then even take a little bit, it's a very different project, but the Van Aken District, which is more intermodal, having a transit stop right there. But have a comparison of some of those square footages, as well as those parking ratios to show how we stack up compared to them and how, but I have some information, again, I'll defer to council, but we can always pick that back up at a later conversation, recognizing there's a few meetings already scheduled out.
Yeah, I don't know that I'd want to monopolize all our time tonight, but I'm just trying to lay out some of the things I think we'd like to see as, particularly, and I wanted to get it in front of the administration quickly because it looks like we have a quick timeline, so I wanted to be efficient with our time to get it to you.
Vice President Litten.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, I'm not going to get into questions now, I just want to use Councilman Baker's questions and his email as an example to all of us of maybe a way we could go about doing this. We are scheduling a meeting every Monday of April, we're going to have a committee, the whole meeting, as long as it takes for us to get through this well. I also think we do our best work when we can send all of our questions in advance, all of the administration, Casto, Roundstone, whoever necessary, the public especially, to weigh in on that and provide feedback in a thoughtful manner that isn't maybe under the pressure of a one-hour meeting with other meetings on top of it, just so that we do our best work, so that we are as thoughtful as possible and collaborative as possible. I am, I'm confident, in the mayor's words, that this is a beginning and not, you know, something that has all been decided, and that we're going to work together with pretty much everybody in this room and beyond to make this something that is the highest and best use for the city of Lakewood. And that happens by us providing as much as we can in advance, as far as our questions go, as council to the administration and others.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Schachner?
Yes, briefly. I mean, people usually don't say this phrase this way, but this is my first rodeo in terms of this type of project, this type of, yeah, this type of resolution being before us. And so I have more of a process question rather than, I think we'll all have time to get into specifics of the, what the project could possibly entail in the future. What I want to understand is, I think I have a good sense of the point of view of council and what we believe our role is in projects like this. I think the public has a view of what the public's role on top of what council's role is. And my question really is, how does the administration view council's role in terms of these, this term sheet and the future development agreement that'll be negotiated from this term sheet? For one, it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know, I know I haven't, did not see a draft of the term sheet prior to, and that may be regular practice, again, first rodeo, but didn't have input on that negotiation, specific negotiation about the term sheet, what's going to be on it, presented to us, signed by the administration and the developer. So essentially, the question is, does the administration feel that the role of council here is that we're more advisory in that this will be negotiated between the administration and developer, and then when input is made, it's either prior to negotiation or after negotiation is performed, and we're seen mostly in the same view as planning commission is seen, as ABR is seen in terms of we review what has been negotiated and then provide recommendations on top of that? Or are we seen more as a partner, as having representatives in the room in terms of negotiating what the actual development agreement is going to be? That's just my, I don't need an answer now, but that's my general question going forward in how this is viewed, performed.
So, Councilman, Councilman Schachner, first of all, the process that's in front of you today is different than the process that was done several years ago, where you were presented a term sheet and then the administration asked to then go and execute a development agreement based on that term sheet. This is different. The term sheet, to your question about council's role, you're absolutely a decision-maker in this. There are decision points that'll be, that are in this deal that are beyond, one, just our authority as administration, and so you're very much a decision-maker in this. How we've gotten to this point is based on input that was provided previously with the community development objective, 13 development objectives that had set out with the RFP, with the RFQ, with the RFP. And the term sheet to this point has been to get back to, or to make sure that we implement those 13 objectives. There are going to be other things that all seven use individually, collectively, are going to have that want to see this, things incorporated into this project. going to have that want to see this, things incorporated into this project. This is now that jumping-off point where we can take, build from that term sheet and now add those types of things into the project as we begin to move forward. This is a very high-level document right now. There's a lot of details that we haven't figured out yet. If there's something that is, just you feel is blatantly missing from this, then this is the time to let us know that it's blatantly missing, and we'd like to see this incorporated. We can incorporate that along the way and work with Casto and North Point to bring something back to you and have discussions with you along the way about how they can do that, or if alternatively, if there's something else that they can do to get to that same point. So you're very much a decision-maker in this, in the fact that you have to approve, you have the authority to approve the development, you have the authority to approve the final development plan as part of this, and the term sheet was simply based on those past efforts, efforts by the community, by past councils, to get us to that point.
I understand we have approval authority. My question was in the creation of what we are approving in the future, and I think you answered that, too.
Yeah, so, yeah, along the way, absolutely, you need to be involved in that drafting of that development agreement to make sure that whatever is presented in front of you, as Council President O'Malley alluded to, it should not be the first time you're seeing that. You should have your involvement in it along the way.
Councilmember Keppel, and then we'll, I think we'll stop there, we'll start the, we'll take a break for just a couple of minutes, and then we'll start the regular meeting, and we can take this up first thing to continue the conversation.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I just, while some of this is my first rodeo, too, some of it isn't in terms of capital projects that involve programming space. And you touched on this a little bit in terms of how we are moving forward with who programs, who's in charge of programming this space, how is that overseen, how is it designed? Like, for instance, you have a Class A office building lobby, you have a community space where people are going to be gathered and need to use restrooms and have water and electricity, all these sorts of questions. And so I'd be anxious to hear as we move forward and to be looking at how do we develop this space so it's truly for the community and designed, you know, to support the great work that we already do, I see some of our community partners from Lakewood Alive in the audience, and then in other community events in the future.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, my approach on these things and everything has been to, you know, defer to people who know more than I do about aspects of what we're considering, and to rely on the expertise of people in the community who I deem to be experts, and of course, people working here at the city who are. And, you know, you won't get a whole lot of feedback from me just telling you now on architecture or design. It's not my wheelhouse, but I do know how to count, and so the return on the investment that we're going to be making into this project is going to be really important for me, I guess, as a private, this will probably be my last council meeting tonight, but, you know, just, I hope I speak for everybody on council when I say we're talking about, you know, investing resources that belong to the taxpayers of the city, you know, understanding when we're going to recoup that investment and at what rate, I think is going to be a very important part of the conversation moving forward. Okay, let me make a quick motion to approve the minutes of the previous committee of the whole. Second. Discussion, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion passes. Again, if you'd like to speak on this as a member of the public, the Agenda Item Sign-in Sheet, it's number 18. We'll take it up at the outset of the next meeting. Move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're adjourned, we'll convene the full council meeting in a couple of minutes.